I didn't use.
When we did it, we talked to all of them.
Think you'll watch it?
And can talk to it when they, you know.
Okay, well, the Boy Scouts.
They're going to be allowed to come in when we do the proclamation and do pictures. And we can take pictures of them.
I know what we've done.
We talked to them.
And I like that idea where they're all part of the business. Oh, yes. Goes downhill fast.
Okay. Do you have masks on you now? Do you have masks on?
I'll let you know.
So Eric, we are meeting Mr. Davidson. He is not able to be here.
Hello, Eric.
How are you, brother?
I'm good, geez.
Good.
Good, good.
Yes, ma'am, they do, I guess.
You're so funny, I love this.
I'm hearing this gentleman, you know, really, ladies, I wanted to say, who's this random guy? They're, uh... Just how you are from America. I took my class, I went to do, and the great sky, forty-one. Yeah, it was bigger, yeah. When I did the day, they actually got that, they changed the county. Yes. I forgot about you.
Everybody gets day left.
Oh, we're slight. At the bank, we are slight.
Are you? I guess that's...
It is greater than all time low, and so everybody's taking advantage of it. Big deal.
It was wonderful.
All right, we're going to get the green started, and Commissioner Granbury would like to make a quick comment.
Uh, for everybody that don't know, due to the, uh, vote in Columbia being backed up to midnight every night, they have officially opened Spring Hill Location, which is at five-six-three Murray Hill Street. If anybody want to go upstairs, I'll send somebody up there from seven to seven, and it started today.
Where is Spring Hill again, Chuckie?
No, look, I just...
Murray Hills.
Five, wait a minute, hold on.
Murray Hills, right.
Five-sixty-three on Murray, Murray Hill Street. If you come straight through town, right up to South Fane and go, it's the first street to the left, to right, sorry, right.
Yeah. All right, we'll get ready for our regular meeting. Do we have a tall order of things, and, uh, who'd you say was doing the prayer?
Steve.
Steve. Uh, Doris, would you like to send the pledge?
Sure.
Sam, please, congratulations, please.
Congratulations. To the United States of America, and to your beloved, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, Ian. Our gracious heavens, Father, we just come to you again, thanking you for another beautiful day that you allowed us to be part of. And as we conduct this meeting, help everything be pleasing unto you that we do, and we just thank you for all things and everything that you, you do and your son died on the cross for us.
Amen.
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 Thought you were taking this doll. What's going on with this? All right, roll call, please, ma'am.
Ms. Granberry, Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Here.
Ms. Lincoln Schiff.
Here.
And Mr. Davis.
President, on Zoom call.
So the record needs to show that Mr. Davis is here, uh, virtually.
All present.
All right. Mike, thank you for doing that. Be of you. Okay, great, thank you. All right, next we have approval and correction of minutes, and again, we've got two sets here. One is from our study session of September the 10th, and one is of the regular meeting on the 15th.
And you should have a hard copy of the study session in front of you, uh, we got in, uh, today.
So I'll entertain a motion once everybody's had an opportunity to read those.
If everybody's ready, I'll make a motion that we approve the study session minutes from September 10th and the regular session. I don't have the date in front of me.
September 15th.
September 15th, yes, president.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second, all those in favor? Aye, closed, motion carries. Number five, we have awards and presentations and appointments. Here they are, right here, if y'all would like to, folks, come right on in.
You're not in trouble, don't be shy.
Welcome, guys, great to have you here.
Thanks, brother.
Who's the, uh, lucky young man? Congratulations, big day. All right, we have a proclamation, uh, here for the city of Mount Pleasant, whereas the citizens of the city of Mount Pleasant are rightfully proud of those individuals who bring personal pride, have a dedication to success, believe in family and spiritual values, and bring recognition to our city, and, whereas Dominic Brian Andrews, a member of Boy Scout Troop 154 in Mount Pleasant, possesses these characters and is being recognized for his outstanding accomplishments in the Boy Scouts of America. Whereas Dominic has earned the prestigious Eagle Scout rank, the highest rank a Boy Scout can earn. His Eagle Scout project consisted of blazing a trail through a previously unused property. He established this walking trail to connect two neighborhoods and to provide a little bit of nature in the city. He partnered with the Cowboy Up Foundation to use this trail to bring awareness to suicide prevention. He had to clear the trail, haul out trash, build a trailhead sign, and work in conjunction with many different entities to complete the trail. He had several long workdays and was overwhelmed by the outpouring of support that was shown by the community. Whereas the city of Mount Pleasant and its mayor and board of commissioners wish to join in honoring this outstanding individual for his accomplishments at this time. Now, therefore, I, Bill White, Mayor of the city of Mount Pleasant, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October the 20th, 2020, as Dominic Brian Andrews Day. And call upon all citizens of the city of Mount Pleasant to join with us in recognizing Dominic Brian Andrews for his achievements and the honor of earning the rank of Eagle Scout. Congratulations. Should somebody like to get a photograph or two?
And I think there's some people in the back, if you just give them a second, just take a picture from that direction, that'd be great. You guys want to line up our photo?
Dominic, keep one of these stuffs in your pictures.
You want your family to see? You guys want to get in there?
Yeah.
Over here.
Have they got what they want? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
The boys of you that have not had the opportunity to get by this, it is fantastic. You've added a lot to our community in green space. I know Bedford's had a lot. Thank you, and really, thank you, it's great green space for this community.
Thank you, very, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Always my review. All right, number six, completion review of unfinished business from prior meeting. Eight, ordinance 2020-1058, public hearing, and this is the final reading. Uh, ordinance to amend ordinance 2020-1055, said ordinance approving the revenues and expenses of operating and maintaining departmental functions of the city of Mount Pleasant for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2021, for to provide an effective date.
Mayor and commissioners, as you know, this is a public hearing, as the mayor said, so if anyone's here to speak, ask before it or against it, this is the opportunity. We presented this to you in September as only being for COVID expenses that we anticipate getting reimbursed for, and that amount is $83,000. And since then, we had a very significant emergency purchase, which was a pump that went out of the wastewater plant. There's only two pumps, and we can't operate with one, so we kind of make an $18,000 purchase for another pump, and we've added that to this, uh, budget amendment in second reading. I'm happy to take any questions, if anybody has any.
Yeah, please let, uh, anyone here that care to speak on this, this is a final reading in the public hearing. Please let the minister put no one who wants to speak, please, ma'am. Uh, again, we, we expect to get reimbursed for the $83,000 fully, uh, but we, we had the expenses right now that were associated with that. Uh, the pump was the pump.
The dead pump.
For everybody's information, why are we doing this, when we have two on the site, one of them was already down, and this one went down, that left us with only one. If we only have one, and it goes down, I don't want to discuss the outcome, because it would not be for it, nor would it smell good.
And we had already attempted to fix it.
Yeah. So, uh, entertain any questions or any comments from the commission. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move that we accept 2020-1058 as presented.
How's the convention?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Monthly report from mayor, I don't have anything other than Thursday night, six o'clock, uh, community center, there'll be a candidate form. You can probably go for a little while, but I kind of expect that we probably want to get out of there before eight. And it's also debate night, so just have a while.
And that, that is sponsored by the local, uh, Mount Pleasant Chamber.
Chamber of Congress, correct. That's all I've got, uh, monthly financial budget report, please.
Um, September, in the third month of the, of the new fiscal year, uh, as we mentioned before, we've been allocated, uh, $73,000 of COVID relief from the CARES Act, and then another $10,000 FEMA. So total of $83,000, and that's just what you just, uh, just approved, that, uh, those monies will be go for COVID-type expenses and, uh, and, uh, emergency personnel during the COVID time. So we will, uh, we expect to be able to, uh, utilize that fully, and should there be money, uh, left for, for other communities are not able to use their allocation, then there's a possibility we could even be, you know, getting some more. We won't know that until after the, you know, deadline is passed and everybody activated their request. Kelly has worked very diligently and very hard, um, as has, uh, Victoria and Sonia, in pulling all this information together. They work very hard getting all of the, everything, um, I mean, it's, it's, it's just like a book, you turn it in. So that, uh, they're, uh, certainly been amended and appreciated. The, uh, at the end of September, our expenditures are just about where we would expect them to be. Revenues are down slightly, the, uh, water, wastewater's down, uh, we have the coat, I think COVID had some effect on that as well as because of the industry not, not being at full capacity. And also, uh, we had a wet, wet summer, so therefore, there just wasn't much wastewater usage. But the expenditures are just about where we would expect them, the only two exceptions would be the, those, um, funds where we have, uh, major, um, grants and projects going on. So nothing out of the ordinary or unexpected. I don't think you got your package, had the full details of all the...
It did. Can I add a couple of things before we get a motion on this, please? Uh, the first is that I want everyone here to see a certificate that we received from the Tennessee Cop Patrol's office of the treasury that, uh, speaks volumes to the work that, uh, the team does here. Uh, this certificate was proudly presented to the city of Mount Pleasant. We got this certificate because your budget was adopted owner before the year-end, your budget was filled, filed with our office within 15 days of adoption. No issues or concerns were raised during our review of the budget. Your local government is not currently under the oversight of Water and Wastewater Financing Board or Utility Review, or Utility Management Review Board. That's huge. Uh, so thank you for that. During our work session on Thursday night, uh, we were presented, uh, again, thanks to Loretta and Kate and, uh, the team, we, uh, we unders, we know right now, uh, that bond rate, bond rates are as low as they've ever been since World War II. And it was time to take advantage of those rates. So what we did was, we went back and we looked at some debt that we had associated with some bonds that dated back to 78, I think was the oldest. Kind of makes me shake my head, but anyway, uh, during the transaction, we are not extending any maturities on those bonds. So we're not taking them out any longer than what they were already for. Uh, we're saving right at $300,000, uh, to the city. It's 14.547% decrease in what we're paying overall, so a lot of great work. That was discussed Thursday night at the work session, so again, I just want to thank you all for all the hard work for the getting those bonds, looking at the refinancing, and again, this is, you don't get this every day from the cop control of the treasury, I can assure you, being a banking, you don't see that every day, so.
And just on top of what the mayor said, that we will have a special call meeting, we'll talk about it later in the, in the agenda, to address those bonds on October 29th at 6:00 P.M.
Yes. So with that, any other comments? Entertain a motion.
Motion except the financial report is presented by Loretta.
So do we have a second?
Second.
Sorry, you've got a couple of seconds. And, uh...
There's a little chirp in my...
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, monthly report from city manager.
It's mayor, I have a few quick things. Uh, Keith McCafferty, Public Works Director, and I attended the county commission meeting last night. It was a public meeting to request, uh, to be able to participate in the community development block grant program. Because we are completing the program, it's at the wastewater plant right now, it's about closed out, uh, we can ask the county to allow us to apply on their behalf for $625,000. We would have a 13% match, which would be $81,250. Uh, our intent would be to go protect our, continue to protect our water source, uh, look at our, our 100-year-old water lines that extend to Lewis County. Uh, we were the only ones present, uh, with interest to, uh, go after this grant. However, because of COVID, uh, they've allowed people to email the mayor, uh, until Thursday of this week. So if no one else expressed any interest, I would anticipate we'd be in front of the commission asking to move forward on this, uh, community development block grant. Um, anybody that doesn't know how we operate, uh, these are block grants that the city can apply for every year. You have to complete the project before you can apply again, and since the county many times doesn't meet the demographics, or they don't have the infrastructure issues we have, every other year, we can, you, we can apply to the county's money, and we've done that twice in the past four years. Uh, we can't survive without grants, so it's really important that we continue to go after these grants, so it was good that we were the only ones there. Uh, mayor's already mentioned the, uh, chamber sponsoring the meet and greet. Uh, we have met with TEMA, we have a flood mitigation meeting, uh, a week from tonight at 6:00 P.M. at the community center, oh, I'm sorry, that's here. Right now, it's scheduled to be here, where TEMA officials can talk to people that have flooded, uh, recently about possible, possibly being accepted into a mitigation program to buy their homes. If that's going to move forward and there's a lot of interest, it would have to come back to the commission, the commission would have to approve it, because the city has to pay 12.5% towards that. Uh, that 12.5% could be in kind, does not have to be in cash, so we are just simply starting the process to see if there's any interest in it, and that meeting is next Tuesday night. We have met with the school board...
What time, Kate, I'm sorry?
Six o'clock, six o'clock in here. Uh, we've met with the school board representative, Wayne Lindsay, we've met with the school board chairman, Michael Silverite, and we've met with Eric Perriman, who's over maintenance for the schools, about the drainage issue problem behind the middle school. We have their attention, they've already talked with Jay Oliver, they're already talking with their engineers about what they can do to help fix the problem that's behind the, the middle school. So those are some things that transpired, you know, just recently about trying to help the, the flood issues. And then finally, I was going to let Cory have the floor for just a minute to, uh, kind of reiterate what she had sent out earlier today in an email regarding the sunshine law for everybody's benefit, including future candidates that are running for office.
Yes, so I'm not sure where I need to stand so y'all can hear me, so...
Well, you need to take and pull your mask off, because you don't want to run anybody yet.
Yeah, I'll stand back here and talk. So I've received several questions from the commission recently and also from the staff about, uh, the sunshine law being public notice and also, um, talking with each other outside of these meetings, and I also realized that I kind of threw you into the wall, Commissioner Harvey, because you never got this information. The other commissioners have seen this before, and also know there's a lot of other people running for commission, so it's just kind of a timely, uh, topic. But, so I've sent you an email, um, a summary of the sunshine law, and what it is, just a real simple statute that explains that you have to have public notice, and basically, all of your communications with each other needs to be in a publicly noticed, adequately noticed, public meeting. So what does that mean? No talking to each other about things you could vote on or possibly vote on outside of these meetings. Um, it creates appearance of impropriety, also, if you deliberate outside of here and then don't deliberate in a meeting, any action that's taken would be void. So it's just your friendly reminder that the sunshine law requires you to talk to each other in public meetings, and also that all meetings have to be publicly noticed. Uh, we talked about this a little bit with Mr. Davis being on Zoom today, because I was worried about that being, us not having the correct notice, but I reviewed the commissioners, or not commissioners, the governor's order, and this is fine. Um, also with the special meeting that you'll talk about later today, we will have to specifically state what you're going to meet about. So it can't just be, this is a general meeting, so you can talk about pretty much anything you'd like, but with a special meeting, we have to put special notice in the paper and on the website that says exactly what you're going to be deliberating, and you can only talk about those things in that meeting. So, um, like I said, I did send you an email, it's kind of just my summary in my words, but also I've copied and pasted the law, um, in an attachment. And like I said, I think everybody's seen this before, but I'm always available to talk to you individually or all together in this meeting, um, about any of those topics, so just let me know.
Thank you.
Thank Cory.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Is there anything, Cory, in specific that has brought this about?
I've had a lot of questions from a lot of different people, um, and also, I'm serving as interim attorney for another city right now, and they had issues as well, so I had this information prepared and wanted to send it out to all of you. And I don't know if you can...
Can you hear that, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Just making sure. All right, anything else, any other question? Cory, thank you. All right, we don't need a motion on that, now we have special reports from city departments and committees, wastewater liaison, and the biggest part of this certainly is the status of barge.
Yes, and you all have that in front of you, just real quickly, over the wastewater treatment plant improvements, we're in the process of finalizing the, this is the Headworth project that was the Murray County grant that we're closing out. Uh, it's very close to being closing out, I would imagine by the next time we get together, it will be completely closed out, which is why we can apply for the next grant. The sewer truck line, have you, you know that you all voted to approve the bids last month, they will begin construction this month on the trunk line rehabilitation. Rainey Street Sewer Improvement, they're 90% complete with a design on that project, so that should be moving forward quickly. And then on the final, largest part of the project, the wastewater treatment plant improvement, uh, we did submit an updated report to USDA in September. We're waiting for an answer on that, if you remember, we've gone from a, uh, inverted siphon to a pump house at Rainey Street, and also are going to an MBR system rather than biomag. Uh, I don't anticipate any problems with that getting, um, approved. If you ask where we were with that, design-wise, engineering-wise, on the wastewater treatment plant, we're about 50% there on that. So that's the update on where we are with all of our sewer projects.
Are we on a time, on, on the general timeline, Kate, I understand we're pretty much on, on track with that?
We are on track, we will probably be a little bit late, but the state knows that, um, we, we, they want it done by, um, early 2022, and I think will be done mid-2022. Of course, they're approving everything along the way, so they know that.
All right, that's what I'm...
Sometimes there is a holdup.
A lot of good work. Any other questions on the barge update? Again, for those that have not, we were looking at the biomag system. Uh, I, my comment on that would be, it's very new technology, and sometimes with new technology, I think as a commission, we didn't feel like the new technology worked very well to start with. That's why we still got about 3.5, $4 million worth of debt related to it. Uh, so we, as a commission, decided that we would go back with the MBR, which is a much trayer and true system.
And cheaper.
And cheaper, because our feeling was where we didn't want to spend this money twice, which has already been done once. You better learn from your mistakes, so. Any other comments on this? How about Mount Pleasant gas?
There's no report, everything's fine with the gas system.
Is this the, the motion, I don't think so, all right.
Pardon?
It does not...
No, it does not, sorry.
All right, next we have new business. Eight, ordinance 2020-1059, this is a first reading. An ordinance submitted Title 16 of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code by adding Chapter 6 regarding the creation of a film and media production permit system for the use of public property.
Uh, mayor and commissioners, I want to thank, uh, Victoria Pointe for working on this. We basically have taken from other cities what they're doing, but we learned pretty quickly, when somebody comes in and wants to do a video within a week, that we need a permit process, and we need some fees attached to it. I encourage you to take a look at it between now and the final reading, and if you want to suggest any changes to it, but, um, it, it seems we've covered all the bases as far as we're concerned. Everybody on the leadership team has taken a look at it, so this is first reading, we can certainly amend it on second reading, but we definitely need something in place going forward, because we seem to be a place that they want to do a lot of videos, which is a good thing.
I have a question on it, and that may be something I missed, and Victoria, you can ask at, in the reading. The fees, if it exceeds that, is there something in there that addresses that?
I'm sorry, what do you mean?
There's fees for using things, but is there something that, if it exceed, is there a cap on it? I didn't see that where it was, or does there need to be?
So like, if they wanted to come in and they wanted to film for like, say, 10 or 15 consecutive days, would there be a cap on it? Currently, not, but that's something we could look at if you feel more comfortable with that.
I, I just asked because it was like, sometimes with weather or things like that, where it would hinder commerce in the city, and that was there a...
There is some, uh, wiggle room in there for things like weather, can be rescheduled, everything's going to be at the discretion of the city. Like, if they wanted to come in during, whatever, say, barbecue festival, and they want to say, well, we want to film during this time, we have to just... we want to film during this time, we have the discretion to say, we already have something going on, so you can't use it during this time. So is the same thing with it being consecutive days or weather. If it's not a prone deal to use it, then they can't use it during that time.
So you could always address that in a contract when you do that.
Yeah, and then I think it's in there too, where if something like weather happens, they have a certain amount of time where they can request an extension on it. And once their permit date is up from the day that they had initially filed for it, then they could file an extension for it.
Thank you. But Cory and I will specifically review that between now and second reading to make sure that we're protected on that.
I read that in there somewhere, Dawson. I can't.
I thought it was in there, but I don't have it in front of me. But if you just look, that was just a question that occurred when I was reading it, and I left that on the table at home.
And I think what people should really, or the last two pages really, and make sure everybody's comfortable with those fees. Because that's really what gets them bowled down through.
And Kate and I have talked about this before, but the fees have to be rationally related to the cost. So it can't be like a money-making deal. It needs to be, it can be a little bit more or less, but it needs to be closely related to where the city's actually spent.
Yeah, the actual cost.
Well, I knew that that's what the curve, though, if it went over and then it's where it got to be, where it could be.
We can't be, yeah, we're going to make sure that doesn't happen.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? That being said, I'll accept a motion.
I make a motion that we accept. Ordinance 2020-1059 is presented on its first reading.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mike said I could see, he just didn't say it. It didn't come through.
I said aye.
I was talking too much.
All right. Motion passed. Again, that's just the first reading. B, resolution 2020-32, resolution establishing a new bank account and declaring representatives of the city of Mount Pleasant to have the authority as signatories for that account.
And Mayor and Commissioners, we learned from the state that through our sexual sex offender registry, we have to have a separate account for them. And obviously, Loretta and I cannot open a checking account without the commissioner's permission, and that's specifically what this resolution allows us to do. Well, it will maintain a small amount of money from year to year, but we can use that money for the program as well.
But again, this is a requirement of the.
Yes, to be separated from the other funds.
That's right. Any other questions, comments? Being none, entertain a motion.
We accept 2020-32 as presented.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. C, resolution 2020-33, a resolution establishing a procedure for electing a mayor and vice mayor. We felt like with their upcoming election, it was time to do this. Really no change, but Kate, I'll let you go over.
Yes, we thought it would be hard in November for new commission, new members possibly. We know we'll have at least one new member to understand that process. So the resolution is very specific. Go over it quickly. Any commissioner, this would happen at the very first meeting after the election, assuming we have the certified resolution. I would anticipate we would. Any commissioner can make a nomination for mayor or vice mayor. Nominations do not have to be seconded. A commissioner may nominate him or herself. A commissioner nominated to serve as mayor or vice mayor may decline a nomination, must do so in the nomination process. The nomination process continues until no commissioner wants to make further nominations, and then a motion to close nominations is not necessary. Then there's a vote. Once there are no more nominations, the vote is taken on each nominee in order which they were nominated. Voting is over when someone gets a majority vote for the elected position. In the event of a tie, the board of commissioners repeats the process until one candidate receives a majority. So I just think this is a guideline after the election. Whoever does wins. They'll know before the meeting, this is the process that we're going to follow. Anything you want to add to that, Cory?
Sure. So this is basically the procedure that's outlined in the Roberts Rules of Order. But it kind of just makes it, in my opinion, this is the most fair kind of process because you can nominate five of you, you know? And then you vote on them in order that they were nominated. So make sure all nominations get to come forward, and then you vote on each one in that order. So it's good that everybody understands the procedure. We thought the best way to do that would be putting it in a resolution because, like it said, there'll be at least one new person here. And so that way, they would have it in writing and would know what the process is. And so that's just basically, like you said, you've elected people a million times before, but there wasn't anything in writing other than what's in Roberts Rules of Order. So this is a condensed procedure to make it easier for y'all. So if you want to pass it, then it's here and right.
And nothing really changed. That's the way it's been.
That's the way we've done it.
That's the way it's always been.
It just hasn't been in writing.
It's just one new.
It's clarified.
All right. Any questions, comments?
So this is how it's set up in the charter, correct?
The charter only, also attached, should we send it? I've sent an email to someone.
You did.
So I copied the section from the charter. The charter, all it says is the commission elects the mayor and the commission elects the vice mayor. So it doesn't give like a procedure for how that works. And so we've been relying on, this is the procedure. Yep. The only thing that's not different, but it's in the state law, is that these are two-year terms. So the resolution says that as well. That's what the state law says. I'm not sure if that's always been. I think every time there's election, there's been a new election for the mayor just because.
Every two years.
Every two years, yes. So really, nothing's different. It just, it keeps us from having all the questions on the first night with a new commission.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Being, I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion.
I'll second it.
Do we have a couple of seconds?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, paw prints on Tiger Trail.
As Mayor and Commissioners, I felt most of you were here on Thursday, and I thought it was a fun presentation that the school made and the principal made. And they haven't really finalized exactly what they want to do. So if you support the paw prints on Tiger Trail, what I would recommend is you vote to authorize the schools to paint paw prints on the city road with the condition that the size and the content and the number of the paw prints be approved by me. And then we know going forward that all of a sudden, they're just not out there painting things, that we're all on the same page. And I think it's going to be a great project. Just that we don't have anything in writing on exactly the next step, but we'll.
What I would request is that if you're going to be the approver, but that they need to come before the commission before they're approved. Not saying the commission needs to approve them. I just think that the commission needs to have a voice in what they're doing.
Well, then you don't want to do it the way I just said, because.
I mean, I'm open for discussion on that. I just, my concern is, is that we wind up with a great big one that nobody knew about.
Right. They would have to give us a plan first that through my office, which would obviously be shared with my staff. But if you wanted to come back to the commission, then we need it. We need to work differently.
I agree with Bill. I think it should.
I'd like to say something.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mike.
Because I'm going to go back to what Commissioner Delore said last week. You know, I don't want, you know, somebody to have something, you know, when the big falls, you know, and then they stop, you know? Then we have an accident. And I don't know, you know, who's going to be held responsible or whatever.
What's talking about writing?
Well, the ones who have writing on the mic could be used as a plus, because what they was talking about doing is using them like in a car ride or lap, which meant people would slow down.
They weren't going to be on the street.
Unless I was talking in the bus rider line.
Yeah, in the bus ride, yeah. In the bus ride.
They did clarify that. They did clarify. They did clarify that. They won't be on the street. You're right. They won't be on the, on the street for that same reason what you said, Mike. They won't be in the street where people will be trying to.
Be on school property.
I think Mike wants to say something.
No, no, that's it.
Okay, all right.
So it's just the only, I guess the only question is, do you want it to come back to the commission for approval, or do you want it to go through just city offices for approval?
I think we need to say.
And left Officer Jackson a message because Mount Pleasant High School was guilty in 1970, and the first class that graduated was '71, not '74. They're trying to make me old. But I regret it since then.
So if we're not approving anything, do we just put this off and have them come back to us with plans?
Well, another, the other option that suggested was you could vote to authorize the city representative to work with the school to design something to bring back to y'all.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that. I just, I'm fine with it. I just think that we need to be, I think it's a wonderful project. Don't misunderstand. I just think we all need to be aware of what's going on.
We have paw prints before. They just wasn't as well, because they're talking about putting them in now.
Right. And I don't think they knew exactly what they wanted to do. They just kind of wanted to fill out the commission and see if they would, it would be allowed.
So you need a proposal to authorize their representative to work with the city with your, with your office's representative, and then bring the final proposal back to the board for final approval.
Yes, that sounds good.
Okay, then I made that.
I don't think we, do we need a motion? We don't have.
I would give any other.
I was thinking just what you said.
We got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We didn't have a second. Oh, Jackie did.
Commissioner Granbury. All right. E, approval of demo bids.
We have a property on Bluegrass that's up for demolition after all the notices to improve. The property has not been met, and we received one bid. It was United Waste College, surprisingly less than we thought it would be, for $5,440. And we would ask that you go through, approve that bid, and we'll get moving forward on that.
I got three.
Those are different bids. The demolition is.
I got it. I got it. Demo service, Waste College, $5,400.
Yes.
For everybody's information.
$5,440.
Any comments, questions? Entertain a motion?
Do we accept the approval, or accept the demolition bid from United Waste College? Got a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we get to these three. Bid award for.
Yes, so Mayor and members of commission, we went out for bid publicly in newspaper for four different services, office supplies, chemicals to our water and wastewater plants, janitorial services, and mowers in situations where homeowners do not take care of the mowing and yard work that we require. So we're going to do this in four separate bids. Each bid only receives one bid, so it's fairly easy for office supplies. We want to recommend that we continue with A to Z office supplies, as they were the lowest and only bid.
Or we need to do these individually?
Yeah, Cory recommended that we do that.
All of these were advertised also on our, there on our website, and were also on Facebook. And I think we got about, I think you said 120. Oh, people actually looked at the bids, so it did, the word did get out there.
Okay. We got a motion to set bid for services. Second. Oh, I said that. Do we have a motion? We have. All right. We have a second.
And I'll second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next one.
Next one in front of you guys, I think is mowing. Is that correct?
Bush hogging.
Yes. So this is some, we also received one bid for this, and this is, was from Tim Davis, and he has done this in the past. And I know, Mr. Davis, you know that this is somebody you're related to, and we just would appreciate a motion to approve, continuing on with Tim Davis.
I'll make a motion.
I can vote, since it's just one bid, right? Fifteen one bid?
Nothing makes much difference, yeah.
Not much difference now. All right, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve. Mr. Davis, not Mike.
Go put it in.
Davis, Bush hogging.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And the last one I've got is for.
We should have, janitorial and.
You got two more. You got that big one next to you, Bill.
The bid we received on janitorial was Steam Masters, but he's currently doing the project, and we are pleased with them. So we would appreciate making a motion that we continue with Steam Masters for janitorial services.
Do we have a motion?
I make that motion that we continue with Clean Masters.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now then the last one, the big one.
The biggest, biggest one. Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, this is for the chemicals primarily needed in our wastewater plant, possibly some in water as well. But the one firm that we are using right now is American Development Corporation, and that is who we use now and is the best bid in our opinion. So we would appreciate the motion to approve us to continue to work with them.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
Did we only get one bid on that one, too?
Yes. And we do a very strange cocktail of chemicals at the wastewater plant to continue it running the way it does, because it had problems years and years ago. And had engineers deciding the best way to have the chemicals out there. So that's probably why you only got one bid, because we do it very differently.
Is this what we have now?
Yes. I'm sorry, can I interrupt you?
And that will change. Once we get everything done out there, this...
We're going to be doing this with a new plant, yeah.
Most of this is the water, the chemicals they use at the water plant. We didn't include a lot of the chemicals that they're using at the wastewater because it's kind of...
Going away.
Yeah.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve.
Got a motion. Do we have a second? Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'm going to speak briefly on this. About two or three years ago, we adopted a New York policy within the city. We'll rebid all these every two to three years.
Three years, yeah.
Because it got to the point that they were stable. I'll call it that, for lack of a better word.
First time we've done it.
I got a better word.
I think that was a good one.
So can I put chlorox in my, there from that?
No.
I think that was a good thing, well, I know it is, that at least that way we stay kernel. Because things are changing in this world every day.
That's a good question, Ms. Cranberry. If you, if you needed to do a very small amount one time here and there, and if everybody's putting chlorox in their drains, we're treating that chlorox out of our system, and we can't handle that. So chlorox and then wipes are the bane of our sewer existence.
Oh, my God, what a great effort.
Stop using wipes, please.
Well, until I went out there, I'm not going to lie, put a couple of chlorox every week down the toilet and stuff to keep them flowing, but they cut me off.
All right.
And disposable wipes are not disposable.
Cory, do you want a vote to approve the special call meeting?
Yeah, I think that's the best way.
Yeah, I was just getting ready to cover that agenda item.
Yes.
All right. G. Approve a special call meeting. What we're having is, again, this meeting is going to be next Tuesday night at six o'clock. It will be very brief because the only agenda item is going to be the approval of the bond refinancing. Again, it's going to save us about $300,000 below 14%.
Aren't you having another meeting next Tuesday night at six o'clock?
No, this is next Thursday night.
Thursday, I'm sorry.
Tuesday night is the TEMA meeting. Thursday night is the 29th, and that is, yes. Thank you. Clarifying that.
Hey, are there two resolutions that need to be?
Because we got one Tuesday night, we got one Thursday night.
No, the Tuesday night is not a, it's not a meeting. It's TEMA's just coming in to present to those folks who may want to come and talk about it.
She emailed it to Loretta and I today and said she was going to send it on to you. Did you not get it?
She said she would send it tomorrow, but I think there are two resolutions.
Okay. She sent us the exact language for the advertisement.
It was not this Thursday, it was next Thursday.
It's a week, yes, it's a week from Thursday.
The 29th.
And the reason we're doing that is you have to have a bid approved.
By the state.
By the state. You need to give them 15 days. That's why we had to push this back for a special call meeting.
Ordinarily, we'd try to just do it here, but with the fact that we're, we need to take it down to this length.
Do we need a motion that says we're just approving the special call meeting to address that issue, or do we have to say it's for two motions?
I think right now y'all can call the meeting, and then we just have to make sure the notice is perfect.
Okay.
So we have a motion to have a meeting. Let you call me.
I make a... 10:29 at 6:00 p.m.
Yes, ma'am.
It is there.
We got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's all we have on the agenda. No one signed up for general comments, and so with that, anybody got anything else they'd like to add?
I do. Go ahead, Eric. Give me first.
No, you go ahead.
I would like to, and Bedford has slipped out, but there is trick-or-treating for the community on the trail over there. Bedford, tell them about...
Why don't you break it up?
Because there have been questions on Facebook and on Mount Pleasant about, has Mount Pleasant canceled Halloween? Not that I know of. We canceled Halloween.
No, it'll be our bigger, biggest Halloween event yet this week.
But tell them we're at time in that...
From 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. along the William Boyd Walking Trail, along the west-hand side of the Community Center.
It's all very COVID-friendly. There's distancing. There's different sponsors that have tents, and you'll get candy, and you move along to the next tent, and we have so far tremendous turnout.
Yes, it's 10-foot spaces with 20-foot between each, and I plan on trying to keep the progression moving along in one singular fashion. That's my hope. You shall see.
And following that, at the church across the street at their building, they will be having hot dogs over there.
They are also participating at the haunted trail, and then afterwards, they have a fall festival in the field right across the street from the Community Center where they'll have hot dogs and other type of goodies. Should be a good night, guys.
Thank you for putting that together, Ben.
Yes, sir.
So back to the flooding issue. I've done that since Thursday night. You know, when we were in here, the, the next night, or that night after our last meeting on the flooding, I went home and I just, I couldn't sleep, you know, because those are my neighbors that are, have bought brand-new homes and are being flooded, and I just couldn't sleep. And when I get like that, I, my creative juices start going in my head a little bit, and so the next night, I came up with an idea of putting some more smart people on the project, and that would be our kids at the middle school. Because we've got some awesome, there's one right there. I love that boy. I call it taco. But so anyway, long story short, I went and talked to Dr. Finn, our STEM director of all three schools, Scarlett Gillum, our sixth-grade science teacher, and Audrey Bryant, our STEM teacher at the middle school, talked to Dr. Drinkwine, and gave him my idea of we need to get these kids to work with industry professionals, engineers, flood engineers, develop a PPL around that because especially with sixth grade, they already study flooding in Egypt and the Nile River and all those river valley civilizations. And so we tied it into learning where they are working with flooding engineers, developing a plan. Anyway, so after that discussion, Dr. Finn discovered that there's a TVA grant, and so we have, the middle school has applied for the TVA grant. Rodney and Robert, we, we talked a couple of weeks, maybe a week or so after we applied for the grant, and they're on board with, working with the kids to help them come up with an idea. So between the school system and our school and the kids at our school, we've got some smart kids, and I'm excited to see what kind of contraction they come up with that can help fix our flooding.
What does PPL stand for?
PPL, Project Based Learning.
Project Based Learning, okay.
Sorry, that's education jargon.
It's one of those education things that go out of...
Yeah, so instead of, you know, sitting and getting, the kids are going to be creating.
Gotcha.
So I'm excited about that. I'm excited about the possibility of them, so.
We used to call it hands-on learning.
There you go.
They got a big term.
That's a good name.
All righty.
Wait, up on... Go ahead, Mike.
Mike, you go.
Up on, yeah, whatever you call that, up on Scottsmill Road, which I, okay, I need the right name. Southport Road, the 447. There is the ditch is full of weeds and tree damage stuff, and someone called me complaining about it, and my issue with that is the homeowner is the Sixty-Taylor resident who had lived there very long died, and it's a family property, but they didn't put them there. I saw another truck dump them there. So how do we handle this situation?
I mean, the, the process is that we have to go out there and cite them.
For something that they didn't put there.
They can come into court and explain that to the judge.
Nobody lives there.
I don't, I have, I don't know the property you're talking about. I haven't seen what you're talking about. I have to look into it, but that's the process. If there's a problem that violates our code, the first thing you do is send a notice, even if the people are dead, you send a certified letter, and that's the legal process you have to follow. And then if things don't get taken care of, like you voted on tonight, somebody goes out there and removes them, and we put a lien on the property.
But I witnessed another truck putting the bushes there, and I don't think that's right, because I came in here and told them in the mail.
Yeah.
I, I don't feel like it's fair to the families.
Well, that would be something that the judge would make a decision based on you stating that, but we have to follow that legal procedure. We can't just step in and say, we don't give them notice, we don't do this. You have to follow that procedure. Robert's not here, but he would explain that as well. So I wrote, I wrote it down, 447 Southport Road?
447.
I'll take a look at it, and we'll get started on that.
There's a white-black house, well, rather than fast, it's just a white-black house thing off the road there, but that was back during the time. I was talking about all the trees been cut down, and I tried to get that guy's tag number, but I mean, I just...